This meeting is being recorded.
Great, here we go, everybody. Welcome Wyoming to another special session. We're doing 10 of these and today we are highlighting and thanking our therapy teams. And I'm going to speak to you all in the language of culture change and mention some unique to therapy, culture change practices. And I ground everything I do in the regulations. So we're going to go through them as well. My name is Carmen Bowman. It's been my distinct pleasure to get to do this culture change grant project with you all in Wyoming for three years. And we are right at the end of the first year and I need to announce something before the end because I wasn't able to yesterday. We are looking for three more nursing homes to join our special project. And what that means is that every year we work with five nursing homes. More specifically with a one hour coaching call every month. And we ask your team to watch the monthly webinars. So education plus coaching and your team agrees to implement three practices. That's it, not very many. So if you're interested in joining me, I do need three nursing homes. Or if you know of a sister home or whatever, please have them call me because it's already March 16th and I need three by April 1st. So we'd love to have you. And here we go, you know, culture change is what I call still the answer. And I'm going to explain what that means. The culture change movement has been around for 20 to 30 years already. And it hasn't taken off like it could have, which saddens my heart. And what bums me out everyone is this, it's still the answer to everything. You watch, the more we talk today, you'll notice that it answers everything and I'll show you how. And when I say culture change, what we always need is changing institutional culture. You know, let's face it, most people are not clamoring to live in a nursing home. We know that. Isn't that funny? We've all worked in this business much of our career. We know people don't want it. So all the more reason to look at how you could make changes that are welcome to both the people who live there and the people who work there. And I always show you how it can work with the regulations. One of the famous quotes of our culture change movement is this, no longer are the needs of the institution going to come before the need of the individual. Wow. If you can say that about your culture, you are doing great. I'm guessing most institutional cultures can't say this and I'm going to add yes. To be honest, a lot of the regs point in this direction. You may not know that, I'm going to show you some today. And, and I'm going to show you all the good outcomes when you actually move in this direction. Another way to think of it, everyone, is just to keep moving the pendulum away from institution. And I have a friend who says, you know, keep moving at least the home like. But in the movement, we don't talk much about home like because we want to encourage you all to create true home. And, and think about what that means. You know what? In your home, you decide what's going to go on the walls. Do the people who live where you only work actually decide what goes on their walls? Or does someone fly in from out of state and she gets to decide, which is pretty common and pretty sad. That's not really true home. Or do the people who live there get to decide which juice they're going to buy? Did you know some teams do this? They include residents and team members on making decisions even which juice to purchase. Isn't that amazing? Amazing, that's what true home is, right? So here's all the outcomes, you know? If people want to live in your nursing home, let's face it. When your nursing home is full or close to full, the nursing home makes money. It's a business that wants to make money. Let's just get that one out of the way. I don't mean to say that's more important, but it's a win. And then when you also serve the individuals who live there, for instance, you give people the food they want, not food they don't want. And you don't wake people up, you honor their circadian rhythm. Guess what? Life is more smooth and it's more efficient. And when it's more efficient, that's a picture of your nursing home saving money. We call it redesigned work, everyone. You know, everyone's going to wake up eventually. So why not help people get dressed according to their schedule? Instead of us making people conform to the institutional schedule. So it's redesigned work. It's the same work, but redesigned according to the people who live there. It's beautiful, so many advantages. And then of course, if people want to work in a culture because it's so fantastic, because it's less rigid than all the other nursing homes. Guess what? You're not going to have as much turnover, people are going to be attracted to your home. We all know that's a huge savings in money. Let alone continuity of care for the dear people who live there. Have any of you ever heard a resident say something like this? Ready? Do I have to train another one? That breaks my heart, everyone. I'm sure it does yours too. Ideally, no older person or person, whatever age, living in a nursing home should have to train yet another team member. So then of course, if, if you're meeting the, the interests, the needs, the schedules of the people who live there. Satisfaction of course is going to be better. You're going to have less internal grievance, you're going to have less calls for the ombudsman. You're going to have fewer complaints called to the survey department, survey agency, right? I'm going to talk more about this in a bit, but another focus, others, so many, I don't have time to tell all of them. But for instance, when you give people real foods that they love, they eat it. Nutrition tends to be better and you save money on not wasting so much money on the supplements that people tend to not drink. You know, so much of it goes wasted, that's a lot of money wasted. When you could be offering foods that people love and they eat it all and you save money. And they eat it and they get healthier and they gain weight or whatever the case may be. The more we get children, the more we get people of all ages. I don't mean to just say only little children should be there. No, it should be people of all ages, right? You yourself, whatever age, twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, right? We all need each other. But I want to show you something. One year I got to be a part of another grant in Colorado. It was a youth day camp grant. So in three nursing homes over the summer, we did three youth day camps. So they only went during the day. It was, you know, easy ages like eight to 13, give or take. And we did things, we lived life with the people who lived in the nursing home. And the children learned about things about people who live in the nursing home, right? So Maya here in the photo with my daughter Ellie, who's 12 in the picture, who turns 17 tomorrow on the 17th. How fun is that? Maya says, the children brought my happiness back. My depression's gone and I stopped my medication today. I have no other words. Children brought my happiness back, depression is gone. You don't hear that about Zola now, do you? So imagine all these ideas of creating normal life, focus on life, not focus on the institution. You're going to have better compliance with regs, you're going to see here in a minute. And what I like to point out to everyone is remember regs are only minimal, right? We should be shooting higher than regs. And then the outcomes go on and on. You'll have better clinical outcomes, you'll have improved health. If people are eating what they want, when they want, when we're giving people the gift of uninterrupted sleep and their bodies heal while they sleep, everybody. Everybody, we heal when we sleep. Sleep is the best thing you could give anyone. I don't, it makes no sense why in all places, a nursing home that we interrupt sleep so much and we make people wake up according to the institutional schedule. But notice when people are well rested, you have better health. You have fewer falls, by the way, I love that. When you give people more decision making day to day, they make the decisions of what goes on in this home. That increases better health, better mental health, right? When you know people well, when you know their preferences and you meet them and you give choice, you, you offer choice and you honor choice. You know, of course, everything's better, right? It's another way of staying working with the people who live there, not ever against them. You know, and we make someone get up, that's a picture of working against someone, not with. Notice what this woman is eating at the nursing home, isn't that amazing? Captain Crunch for breakfast, anyone, I can't do it anymore, but it's yummy. And people are less depressed, anxious, less upset goes on, right? A lot of what we used to call behaviors, so now we say behavioral expressions. A lot of them are based on waking people up when they don't want to get up. You know, if you look at that, we're going to see better quality of life. You know, we need to talk about quality of life more, everybody. Better physical health and better highest practicable level of wellbeing, which we're going to talk about more in this quick hour. Did you know stroking a pet reduces blood pressure? How cool is that? One time I actually ran into a physician order that said, Michael must have his dog with him wherever he lives. Any nurses in the room? We need more orders like that. Therapists in the room? We need more orders like that from the physicians. And I just need you all to know, many nursing homes have figured out how to have a dog over 30 years. How to have a cat, not that hard. If they can do it, you can do it. And birds, you know, birds can become companions. So we're not talking about the aviary, that's fine, but it's actually a picture of passive involvement. You don't really interact with the bird. So when you have a bird in a cage in your room, now it's like a friend and a companion. And we have many stories, so many. Now, some of you have heard the same story over and over, so I'm going to tell you a new one. And that is maybe 10 years ago in Colorado, some of you know Brenda Hancock, she's from Wyoming. And she helped many residents have a bird if they wanted to. And there's a story of a woman who really didn't come out of her room much, really didn't interact with people much. But because of that bird, it sort of brought her back to life. And just, I witnessed it, I was in the nursing home one day and she's standing in the doorway of her room. And she says, hi, would you like to come meet my bird? And this was like new for her. And it really changed her life and her roommate's life. Apparently the roommate didn't really talk much, but she did start to say bird, bird. Isn't that something? And it's the same home where this greyhound lived, there are two greyhounds actually, and they have two big doggy doors. You might be able to kind of see that doggy door on the right there. It's so cool to see two big greyhounds and two big doggy doors at the nursing home, isn't that cool? So it's my joy to show you some things that most people don't know, everybody. The CMS came out with new regs back in 2016, so helping, that's like six years now, right? And many people don't realize that in their executive summary, they actually tell us that. Check this out, the underline, many of the quality of life improvement changes in this final rule are grounded in the concepts of person centered care and culture change. Did you know these changes not only result in improved quality of life, yay, but also, but also improvements in caregivers' quality of work life and savings. What we just looked at, everyone, isn't that wonderful? So now I want to show you one definition. CMS has many definitions, I just pulled out this one. They have a very good, beautiful, beautiful depiction for person centered care. CMS says it means to focus on the resident as the locus of control and support the resident in making their own choices and having control over their daily lives. Wow, think for a minute, everyone. How does that look in your building? Is each resident the locus of control? And does your culture support each resident in making their own choices and actually having control over their daily lives? Isn't that absolutely beautiful? And to be honest, it's not in most nursing homes. Isn't that interesting? We're supposed to do this, here it is, and CMS new regs, even the definition of person centered care. And then one thing I would also point out is, I don't really think that's the definition of care. You know, care is done to you. And really, it's more than that. It's sort of like a definition of what life should look like if you live in a nursing home. Isn't that interesting? It talks about their daily lives. And I want to also educate you, this is kind of funny, but the minute that CMS printed this in the new regs in 2016, the language of person centered care was already outdated. We've been using terminology that says person directed ever since then. So it's too bad. So notice person centered is one thing, person centered is good. You know, there's Joe, we know Joe loves to make car models. So we got him one, hey Joe, here's a car model. That sounds pretty great, doesn't it? However, here's person directed, hey Joe, Joe, I heard you like car models. I got you one, but would you like to do this or would you like a different one? What do you think, Joe? And it's even with the dementia, everyone, it's always putting the person first, always somehow honoring them to do this. To make their own choices and have control. Person directed, resident directed. And before I forget, remember person centered care is not the same thing as culture change. I even hear leaders in our culture change movement just keep referring to person centeredness, person centeredness, person centered care. Well, see, that's only one little part of changing institutional culture, right? Schedules and organizational design, maybe sometimes the physical building, all of that is culture change. Person centered care, care in general is just part of it. And here's some more with the language I want to show you. Look at this, in the beginning, when someone moves out of their home perhaps. Oftentimes, where do they go? What's it called? Independent living, wow. And then they need more assistance and what's it called? Assisted living, wow, great words. And then they need what? More care. And what's it called? Long-term care. Get ready, it's kind of hard. Where did the living go? When I first saw Amy Elliott do that long ago, it brought tears to my eyes. Even the word living disappeared when we started to call it long-term care and we got so focused on care. Look at this, person centered care, person directed care, resident directed care. What's missing, everyone? What's missing is life and living. So I challenge you, don't get wrapped up in talking all day long about care only. Start talking, force yourself to talk about life and living. You might, you might refer to resident directed life, resident directed living. And another neat term is self-directed, because here's why. You are self-directing your life right now and you're going to want to the rest of your life, no matter where you live. So maybe we could bring about an even better way to look at it by calling it self-directed living. This photo, these photos are supposed to kind of depict a great care plan. So look close at the photos, you know? It, it really is a care plan, right? Because it's all about care. What kind of help do you need for your daily care, your daily activities of daily living, right? But if that's all we do, everyone, how boring. You know, the way I think of it is good care should just be a given. We are a nursing home, for heaven's sake. In a way, like, I feel like, don't we talk too much about care? Maybe we should talk more about life. And so the, the idea here in this slide is, what if great care and great care planning is there, but it's sort of in the background? So that we can focus on the person and how they want to live their life today. Let's say all they want to do is go watch the birds. Anybody? I, that's my, that could be my life in a nursing home, I'd be very happy. So think about care, meaning supporting the living the person wants to do. So good. And one time, there's a famous quote, this work person said, you know, it would be nice if, when you move into a nursing home, they didn't ask you all that medical stuff and they just asked you how you want to live your life. You all could do that, start asking, how would you like to live your life? And here comes some really strong resident rights. By the way, I can't read that F word, I'll, I'll try to avoid it. We make the case in the culture change movement that people live in homes and people live in communities. And if you think about it, in reality, people do not live in facilities. The word facility refers to a building, like a school. A school is a facility. And look at that, why is it a facility? Because nobody lives there. A school is definitely a facility. You all represent places where people live, home. You know, you could refer to it as the home, the nursing home, the community, the life care of Casper community. You know, one nursing home in and unto itself really is a community. So your nursing home must treat each resident with respect and dignity and care and care for each resident in a manner and environment that promotes maintenance or enhancement of his or her quality of life. Wow. Recognizing each resident's individuality. Everyone, if, if you could take this away from this training right now, it's quality of life. And here's why, you know, some of you represent therapy and you represent the, all the therapy regulations, right? Some of your activities. And there's activities, regulations, right? Nursing regs, go to the nursing team. Dining, kitchen, nutrition, goes to the dining and the dieticians, right? Get ready. Who is in charge of the quality of life rates? You see how there's not a natural link? We don't usually have quality of life teams. So I wonder if that's part of the problem, nobody's fault. But every single one of you could be raising that issue. You could all be in charge of quality of life, you know, make sure it's on every agenda, I don't know, think about that. Another idea would be to have activities and social services, maybe start to become the quality of life team so that it doesn't get forgotten. And together they're stronger to represent quality of life. And then this whole idea of the person's individuality, that's usually what is missing in most institutions. So trying to raise up the banner, so to speak, bring this, bring it up a notch. You know, is this care plan approach really right for this individual? Or is it just generic in what we do for everybody? Watch out for generic care, that's not what we're supposed to give, we're supposed to give individualized care, right? And then even if you did like a section of the care plan called quality of life, you see how that would guide us, it would help us to do better, to not let it be missed. Then we have a new reg, actually, this was not there before. See, I was a surveyor in Colorado, I also worked for CMS in Baltimore, training surveyors federally, nationally. And it's just kind of been my, my thing to study regs, it's weird, I know. But there's power when you know the regs. And this is new, it says that your nursing home must protect and promote the rights of the resident. Wow, protect and even promote. You see, we're not famous for that, everyone, think about it. If some resident says, I refuse to whatever, take my pills, take the bath, eat the prescribed diet, you know what we, what we're famous for? Somebody runs to go get the social worker. Because it's a resident right issue. And I laugh because, well, should the social worker be the only one that cares about resident rights? We've kind of had it backwards, didn't we? And to be honest, I think they're on to us, I'm sorry to say it that way. But why would they add this new that we must protect and promote? You know, I feel like they're also saying something like, hey, you're good at giving them a coffee and you're good at posting it. But you really need to up the ante here and actually protect the rights and actually promote their rights. And then check this out. CMS also has added something new and it actually speaks to family members. The resident's wishes and preferences must be considered in the exercise of rights by the representative. And that means whomever, it means the legal rep to the family member that's there every day. So I have a, I have some advice, something simple that I learned and figured out. And I call it reframing the question. So never ask a family member what they want. But reframe it to the resident, to the mom, the dad. Hey, family member, what would your mom say she wants? What would your mom say her goals are? By the way, everybody, I didn't even have time to add that in this whole presentation. But you are supposed to be asking residents what their goals are, period. It's all over the new regs. So, hey, family member, help me realize, even with dementia, what would your mom say? Her goals are for her walking, for her using the bathroom, for her diabetes, for her high blood pressure, you know, whatever it is. And get them to be reframed as well. Now we have regs under self-determination. Okay, this was always there ever since 1987, okay? Ignore the parentheses, the right to choose activities, schedules, healthcare and providers of healthcare consistent with interest assessments plan of care. Okay, the right to choose since 1987. Now, now pull out the right to choose schedules. Wow, since 1987. I'd love for you to take that to your team, make copies, blow them up, post them up, you know, challenge your team. Now, they also added including sleeping and waking times, which, which is good. And it sounds good, but I want to teach you all something. Guess what? True choice when it comes to sleep is that your body gets to decide when to wake up. So I actually recommend not asking every single resident when they want to get up. I know that sounds counterintuitive, right? It sounds like I'm against choice, of course I'm not. See, true choice, think about it, is when you go to sleep and you have no alarm, you know, nothing you have to get up for. And your body finally gets the rest, whatever it is that it needs. You all have the privilege of giving that to people living in nursing homes, for heaven's sake, they don't have any job to go to. Whoever thought that it was smart to make people get up on the institutional schedule and eat when we tell them they should eat? You see, it's backwards. And this has also been here since 1987, the right to make choices about aspects of his or her life in this building that are significant to them. I'd love for any of you to tell me in the chat box, what choices would be significant to you? And I'll tell you what, sleep comes way to the top for me as does going outside. What would yours be? And now I want to show you, going deeper right here at this reg into the guidance. It says residents also have the right to choose healthcare schedules consistent with their interests and preferences. And information should be gathered to proactively assist residents with the fulfillment of their choices. Wow, guys, proactive, that is a strong word. I'm using that word a lot in my training. I do a training called proactive practices to prevent falls, it's a 12-month curriculum. And it's all about being proactive, not waiting for the call light, going in more proactively. So see, if you know someone loves Captain Crunch cereal, be proactive, how can we get them some? And guess what else? Your home doesn't have to buy everything, residents sometimes have money they actually need to use. Families love getting gifts, they never know what to get mom, living in the nursing home anymore, right? And then if those two aren't available, perhaps it's your budget. It also goes on to say that nursing homes must not develop a schedule for care such as waking or bathing schedules for staff convenience. And without the input of the residents. How many of you do that? I hope you do, wow. And now it's my privilege to teach you a little bit about highest practicable level of wellbeing. This is all over the regs, everyone, you could just start looking at regs and it's usually the last sentence of almost every reg, right? There shall be social services for each resident, da-da-da, that helps someone attain or maintain the resident's highest practicable. It's inactivity, but then quality of care, then quality of life, okay? And the very strongest place I've learned that it lands is right here at tag 655 comprehensive person centered care planning. Look at this, the care plan must describe the following, the services that are to be furnished to attain or maintain the resident's highest practicable physical, mental and psychosocial wellbeing. I'm sorry, but most care plans never talk about that. And so I want to encourage you to please start doing it, you're supposed to. And this is the beauty, this is the heart of our work, everybody. This is where you can get creative, this is where you'll get excited again for coming into this field. And surveyors could and perhaps should be citing it now, please don't get mad. We can be ahead of the surveyors. I'm surprised they haven't really ever focused on this because it's so beautiful. And I'm going to teach you a little bit more about it. So notice the word, if you would oblige me to yourselves or out loud with whoever you're with, everybody, say the word practicable. Practicable. And notice the word that we're used to saying, it kind of flows off the tongue more easily is practical. And we're used to saying it's not practical. And this is precisely the point. Look at this, here's another hint to remember it. This practicable is what your nursing home signed up to do. They are telling the government, we'll take your money and we will meet these regs. And we will help people be at their most highest practicable level. Whatever they are able to do, they will do. Here comes a definition, innate capability based solely on the individual's abilities and their limitations and their potential, but independent of any external limitations. And see over here is kind of what we're used to, that's not practical. And that means capability based on resources available. So we don't have enough staff, we don't have enough time. Now, I know we're in harder times right now with COVID, everyone, but I want you to learn this, okay? It's not practical, it's practicable. And it's not just in general, highest practicable, it's highest practicable physical wellbeing, mental wellbeing and psychosocial wellbeing. And I'm going to share with you a clip of me interviewing a person living in a nursing home, it's actually during COVID. And you'll see he gives me permission to share this and I apologize. You don't see me talking, which is fine, but it's only because I didn't, I didn't know what I was doing. But you'll get to see him. But you'll get to see him. And consider this a raw interview. I've actually never really done this with someone living in a nursing home. And I'm sharing it with you because this is maybe kind of how it can go for all of you moving forward. You kind of have to figure out how to describe it to someone, how to define it, how to figure it out together. So here we go.
Well, hi, John, this is Carmen. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
And John, is it okay if I record you on the video?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, John, there's some, there's a concept in the federal regulations for people living in nursing homes. And it's, it's called highest practicable level of wellbeing. So what a person is most able to do. And the nursing home is supposed to help a person reach their highest practicable. And then they divide it into three things. Physical wellbeing, mental wellbeing and psychosocial wellbeing. And I just wondered, John, I know you're a brilliant man. And I just wondered, what would you say your highest practicable physical wellbeing is right now? What are you most capable of physically?
I don't know how to answer that.
That's okay. Maybe Suzie can help, like, are you able to walk?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Now, so, so John, we're trying to help team members figure out what a person is most capable of doing. And then our job is to help them do that. So could you be walking more often? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay, so see, that's an example. Maybe on your care plan, it would say, you know, that you are capable of walking and you would like to walk more and you would like to hold on to the ability to walk. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Now let's try, let's try maybe a harder subject. I'm going to ask you about mental wellbeing, but then I'm also going to ask you about psychosocial wellbeing. And you get to decide how to answer. So what do you think, what would you say your highest practicable mental wellbeing is?
Once again, I'm not sure how to answer that.
It's okay. It's kind of a different concept, isn't it? So, yeah, so John, you are very smart, I have noticed. And so your, your highest practicable mental wellbeing is higher than most people think of a person living in a nursing home. Would you agree?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. In fact, I heard that you have an interest in inventing something to do with your pendant, that it would be able to figure out exactly the kind of help someone needs. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's amazing. So see, that's an example. Let's say, you know, I come to the care plan because that's supposed to reflect who you are. And your care plan might say that you have an interest in inventing a, a new pendant. And then our job would be to help you figure out how to do that. What do you think?
Yeah.
That's amazing. And in fact, I want you to know, I talked to the team just, um, this, this week I've talked to your team and, and someone brought that up. One of your caregivers knew that, one of the Shabbas. And then we let the administrator know. And we're all very excited to see if we can help your idea grow. Is that okay?
Okay.
Wonderful. And then one more, you know, if, if you can help me figure this out, try to answer, what do you think your highest practicable level of psychosocial wellbeing is? And maybe Suzie can, because she's good at stuff like this too. What do you think, John? How to say?
And do you feel like you have enough people to talk to and interact with that are on the same level with you? So does it start to feel a little lonely?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Is that kind of what you meant, Carmen?
Kind of, um, let's keep trying. So if we tried to identify what your highest practicable level of psychosocial wellbeing is, uh, let me take a stab at this. Could it be that you feel you could be socializing more with, with people, particularly those who could have these kinds of conversations with you? Is that a fair stab at it?
Yes.
Okay. And then again, we would kind of try to get that on your care plan. Maybe it would say introduce John to other people. You know, maybe they live there, maybe they work there, maybe it's someone in the community that, that we start to feel you might have a connection with. Is that fair to say?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, my gosh, see, this is, this is it, John. That's what I wanted to explore with you. Suzie, do you have any thoughts on any of that? Just curious.
I just am concerned that John doesn't have enough opportunities to, um, you know, that whole concept of use it or lose it.
Yes.
And I see that he's not using his, his brilliance as much as he could.
Yes.
And so I'm seeing he's tending to isolate a little bit more and, um, you know, that, that's, the desire's decreasing a little bit. He's, I don't want him to give up on his brilliance because it's there.
Right.
It just needs an outlet and I'm worried that there isn't one here.
Okay. Now, so we just identified a gap, but now I need your help. How do you feel we could be filling the gap better? You know, what's the, what's the flip side? What are your ideas? What do you yearn for, John?
To what category?
Any or all.
You know, yeah, any of it, but, you know, like, do you have ideas on how to solve the problem? That's kind of the, the flip side question.
Do I have a way to solve the problem?
Yeah. What would your ideas be to solve the problem?
One thought that occurred to me was, uh, put people together by age.
Okay. Sure.
And see if you can make, like, you know, like a connection there.
Uh-huh, yes. Good, good idea, John. How about this? Have you met people from the other houses yet?
No.
And, and probably that's because of the, you know, pandemic. But once things open up, that, that too could be a new avenue for you.
Yeah.
And I'll make sure that that gets passed on, okay?
Okay.
Great. Well, this was exactly what I was kind of looking for. And so, John, the beauty is you just helped me show people that it's not that hard to have this discussion with people living in nursing homes. And then because I also consult where you live, I can pass on these ideas to all the right people, okay?
Okay.
Wonderful. And I'll let you go, I know you get tired, okay?
But yeah, I was gonna say, right now I'm twenty years younger than most of the people here.
Okay. Wow, okay. You're kind of feeling that, aren't you?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, thank you. I didn't realize that. Thank you. Well, great, we'll, we'll get to working on it, okay?
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you, Suzie.
Okay. So everyone, I have to tell you something. I got a text immediately after that. Suzie said, you just made this fine man feel so proud and needed. Thank you. Everyone needs to feel like they can still contribute and he didn't live much longer. So maybe in John's honor, try to have that similar, a little bit difficult conversation as you can with people who live where you work and make sure to cover all three and see where it takes you. And I really feel like, you know, therapists, you guys are kind of focusing on especially the physical wellbeing. We could use your help in going towards mental and psychosocial, but really it's all of us too, right? It's not this therapist, this, these regs are for everybody. Now, because we're focused on our therapy team members today, I want you all to know about something called Grow, Getting Residents Out of Wheelchairs. And I, I didn't invent this, but, uh, there's the website and I want to tell you a couple of things. It's just, it's just a manual, it's about all it is. If you're interested, go get it. And they point out, um, you know, the fact that sometimes people get stuck in a wheelchair and never get out. And so this is training for everyone, again, not just a certain discipline. It guides us to really kind of discover, go back to the beginning. Why did this particular person ever get in a wheelchair? Sometimes there was a fall, we grabbed the wheelchair and maybe they never get out of it again. You know, how this can go. It also brings out what every discipline can do to help people walk more, move more. It's so exciting. They also encourage actually daily prescribed exercises that are per a person, per the individual to help them reach their highest practicable physical, mental and psychosocial wellbeing. They talk about making sure you have productive restorative care that your Medicare will reimburse you for. They also encourage us to switch over from a fall prevention only mindset with more of an independence, you know, greater mobility, independence mindsets. And by the way, they actually use the word ambulation. I don't. You, you can join us in this if you want, but if you think of the word ambulate, what does it mean? And usually what we mean, we, what we mean is to walk. But if you look it up, ambulate technically means to move. And so we're not actually using the word the way it is defined. And unfortunately, it then leaves it up for interpretation. Maybe not everyone always knows what we're talking about. So just another word change, if you want to join us. Ambulate is kind of, kind of strange. It's not normal. I don't use it in my day-to-day language. How about you? So, you know, if you mean walk, then we say walk. If we mean push themselves in the wheelchair, then we say that, right? And this is so fun. So I'm guessing most everyone on the line walks. And, and I'm, you know, forgive me if someone, someone doesn't, but if, if you walk, is it true that you do not have a pressure ulcer? I just think it's funny to think about this. So if people walk more, they tend to have pressure sores less. And most of us are probably proof of that. Isn't that great? So lots of cool stuff there. Something else really cool I'd love for you all to know about. Oh, there's so much and so little time, but I've been so blessed to be involved in so many projects over the years. And CMS actually did a big project on culture change and the environment with the Piner Network, for which I got to be the facilitator at a big national symposium. And one of the best things that came out of it was the NFPA, that's the National Fire Protection Association. They, they fell in love with our movement. Can you believe that? And they made four big changes back in two thousand and twelve, four big culture change changes, okay? And one of them is that you can have additional corridor seating in your hallways if you have furniture securely fastened to the floor or wall. The furniture leaves a six feet clear width for people to walk by. And this can be done with simple brackets. Your furniture groupings are all on one side of the hallway, not both sides. And groupings don't exceed fifty square feet and must be spaced at least ten feet apart. Did you know you can have chairs in the hallway for people to walk and sit and rest? And I'm guessing you maybe didn't know that. Isn't that great news? And then another project, another symposium was CMS, the Piner Network on dining. And, um, again, very, very fortunate, got to facilitate that. That turned out to be a next step, um, a, a task force that created what, what we call the new dining practice standards. And CMS actually refers to these in the regulations. And Suzanne Querin, uh, two Tuesdays ago, if you were with us, referred to them. And since we may have speech therapists on the line, I just want to teach you all what I mentioned earlier. It's actually a standard of practice. We call it real foods first. And look who gave us the idea, and it is the American Medical Directors Association, the physicians, right? They have a standard where we provide foods of a consistency and texture that allow for comfortable chewing and swallowing. A person who might have difficulty swallowing often rejects pureed food or artificially thickened foods. Yep. But they may eat foods that are naturally of a pureed consistency. That's the, that's the key. So things that are naturally pureed, mashed potatoes, puddings, yogurt, or finely chopped foods because they retain their flavor and can be equally well handled. Can you believe that? So you do not have to push the ground, everybody. You know, ground food gets dry, that's why we pour gravy on it. A baked breast of chicken, finely chopped, actually retains its moisture better, tastes better, not so, not so dry. Um, and then you could have fun growing the list. That's how I've always thought of it. What else? What other foods, everybody? You can tell me in the chat box, what might you have eaten this week? That was actually of a pureed consistency and you love it and you want more of it. And now imagine you are on a pureed diet or it's suggested. You know, are you going to want your hamburger pureed? I don't think so. But wouldn't it be yummy to eat foods that are naturally already of a pureed consistency? So we're talking things like soufflés, maybe more eggs soufflés and bisk or thicker soups. How about guacamole? I could eat it with a spoon. Anybody else? Refried beans, hummus? There's so many different flavors that you can do hummus now, even dessert hummus, maybe cottage cheese. I've learned from other people, guys, think of a piece of toast. It doesn't sound very pureed, does it? But think about what happens to toast in your mouth. The minute it hits your mouth, it turns to mush. Sometimes you might be able to work with some individuals, you know, that toast could even work for them. Maybe they'd love to have a piece of toast. No one's let them, that's institutional when we don't let an adult do something. In fact, we try not to talk like that. We don't say let or allow. We support people. Here's another neat idea I've learned from smart dietitians and speech therapists. You know, cold cereal in set in milk for a little while, what happens? It gets soggy and perhaps more of a pureed consistency. So, you know, everybody, you always have to take these ideas with a grain of salt. I call it a grain of salt of individualization. You gotta balance it with each person you're thinking about, right? And there's also ways to thicken things more naturally. And again, you would need to figure this out as a team, feel comfortable doing it. Sometimes all these new ideas make people nervous understandably, but I just want you to hear that other homes have done it. And then, you know, we talk a lot about preferences and I wanted to show you right here at tag six ninety-two nutrition, preferences can rise to the level of immediate jeopardy. Can you believe this? So dietary restrictions or downgraded diet textures such as mechanical sock or pureed were provided by the home against the resident's expressed preferences and resulted in substantial and ongoing decline in food intake, resulting in significant or severe unplanned weight loss with accompanying irreversible functional decline. That's an example. But notice it was a, it was a deficient practice going against someone's expressed preferences. And here's another example at actual harm. And they define it actually as the failure to assess the relative risks and benefits of restricting or downgrading diet and food consistency or to accommodate a resident's choice. Um, and the next bullet, the failure to accommodate documented resident food dislikes and preferences that resulted in poor food, load intake and a decline. So just letting you know that not following preferences and some sort of decline can be actual harm. I don't have time to go into language, everyone. I wish I did, but we have some recorded webinars on language. Language is fun to laugh about and talk about. It's actually in the regs, under Resident Rights for Respect and Dignity. We're supposed to avoid the use, the use of labels. Like we should never call anybody a label. They're not hoarders, they're not wanderers, they're not feeders, they're not complainers. They're not the dementia patients, they're not the stroke, they're not the frequent faller. They are a person first, isn't that cool? Always think person first. So that's Mary and she's been falling a lot lately. And then there's more that I don't have time for. Um, I want to invite each of you to be aware of our Wyoming Culture Change Coalition. There is a coalition and we're just trying to do some of these things. Move away from some of the institutional ways toward these changed ways. these changed ways you see there. We have some big goals, like to boldly go where no state has gone before. We could use your help with that. We have a lot of free stuff at this website that Mountain Pacific holds for us. And if you want to be a part of the next year's intensive coaching, let me know. And something special coming up, March, March 25th. This is our monthly webinar. And the homes that have been in the project, Star Valley, South Lincoln, Granite, are going to share what they did over the whole year. And then Life Care Castor and Wyoming Retirement are going to share what they've done for half a year. We use the Artifacts of Culture Change 2.0, um, in the project. That's another resource to all of you. There's 134 practices represented. It becomes a great learning tool if you just make copies for your colleagues. And I want to invite you, the next special session will not be tomorrow, but it will be Friday, the 18th, and it's meant for your whole environmental services teams. And then the next big conference session with a paid culture change trainer is Tuesday, 2:00 PM, it's all Mountain time, your time. Um, Barry Barkin is one of the inventors, the developers of the community meeting. This is the place where you can start to like, talk about budget decisions and that kind of thing. So come, join us. Those are next, and then I'll advertise the next ones after that. We have two big goals for your state, everyone, as a coalition. Number one, every person who works in a Wyoming nursing home actually becomes knowledgeable about culture change. We could really use your help with that. Um, you could give them the links to these recordings. You could share handouts. Everyone's invited to everything. And then our other goal, wouldn't it be something, if Wyoming, you could be the first state to say that nobody who lives in a nursing home in Wyoming is woken up by someone else, unless, of course, they ask. But the whole idea is natural awakening, uh, being well-rested. Here is the, the website, everyone, the link to all the recorded, um, webinars. Like, like today should be up there pretty soon. They're pretty quick. And last but not least, I'll give you these takeaways. Hey, therapy teams, what if you guys took the lead on making sure choice is being honored? Here's a big one. What if you made sure the resident wanted to leave the group activity to go do therapy? You know, instead of taking them, I hope nobody does that. What if you took the lead on making sure highest practicable, um, physical, mental, and psychosocial is tended to? What if you took the lead on making sure people who can walk, are walking, that maybe there's corridor speeding to help with that? Um, to make sure people are eating as independently as they can and what they want, and preferences met, and all of this you saw is in regs. So I'm finally through all of that, and I'm ready for some questions or comments. And you feel free to unmute yourself. And I'm clicking all the buttons that say ask to unmute so that you can. Go ahead.
So Carmen, I have a question about, uh, your seating, the diagram for the seating in the hallway.
Yep.
Um, does that, excuse me, frog in my throat, does that take into account uh, the regulations for hallway width, and you have to maintain
Yes.
six feet of distance between obstacles and walls? For encroaching purposes?
Well, notice, notice, I know it went by fast, Brittany, but one of the stipulations is you can have chairs in the hallway if you have a hallway wide enough to, to also leave six feet. Okay?
Okay, perfect. I had to stop.
Yeah, if you have eight feet or 10, you're good. If it's only six feet, you could not do it, right?
Perfect.
Yeah, good question. Thank you. Go for it. Um, any of you that are interested in doing that, like if your maintenance team, your plant operations was not listening, um, just start to have them maybe here and realize, and maybe they could be the ones to go look it up. They're the ones that, they're the ones that are the experts on the life safety code. And if you bring up life safety code 2012, corridor seating, they'll find it. They'll see that you know what you're talking about. And I'm going to make myself a note to make sure I cover that on Friday when I have environmental teams on the line, okay? I think I have it already, but I'll make sure. And then, thank you. Um, some of you at Amy Holt brought up that food you like that are naturally pureed. Yep, this is what I'm going for, you guys, is mousse and flan. That's right. I forgot flan. Uh, another one, oh, ready, guys? One time a dietitian came up to me at the end of a conference, and she said, honey, if I ever have to have pureed, you just give me cheesecake. Anybody like that idea? Isn't that great? Oh, my gosh. Cheesecake. Need more cheesecake, everybody. Let's see. And thank you, someone else has a comment here. Uh, Max, eating when I am hungry and not when I am not, and sleeping when I want to, and privacy. That's what would be significant to you. Yes, thank you, Max. That's an ombudsman speaking, everybody. Awesome. Hey, Brittany, um, Brittany, Brittany, you have Cindy with you, and Cindy represents people who live in a nursing home. I'm wondering if Cindy has any comments or questions for any of us.
So I have two of my ladies here with me, and neither of them have any questions right now.
That's fine. Thanks, you guys. All right. Okay, I'd love to hear from somebody. Comments, questions? What do you think? Kelly, Roggy, Maureen, Kate, Tracy, Cindy, Sherry, Max. You should be able to unmute yourself, everybody. Wyoming, what do you think? What are you worried about? What are you excited about? And I have one last thing to ask every one of you in the chat box. The only way I can get your feedback is in the chat box, basically. So could you please rate your knowledge about this subject? This varied subject, uh, pre-session and post-session, one to five. And if you have any feedback, you'd rather type it than say it, I would love it. Anything at all? Anything you wish you learned more about, or I did different, or stuff. Hot, five is high, guys. One to five, five is high. So rank your knowledge pre and post. Thank you. And here's your chance. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, after you do that, I'll let you go. Yeah, I feel you're paying everyone. The struggle is how to implement what we know is our purpose in the current context of staffing and increased surveys, Brittany. Yeah, well, I just say, don't, don't lose sight of why you got into this, everyone. So many of these culture change ideas are simple, common sense, and they kind of do the heart good, you know, when you can come back to something that feels good. That's what a lot of people have told me, just being in the project gave them something different to focus on instead of COVID. Perhaps even just going after language at this point in time, you know, is doable. So uh, thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you. I'll see you, somebody on Friday. See you at the next ones.